Good evening and welcome to our Town of Smyrna Town Council meeting for November. Amber, our first item of business is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, then I will move to item two and call our meeting to order tonight. Our prayer will be done by our Smyrna Police Department Chaplain Bob Horn and our pledge of allegiance will be by Smyrna Fire Department Chief Brian Goss. If you'll all please stand with us.
Heavenly Father, we're indeed thankful for this opportunity to come and gather here this evening. We're thankful for the day that you've allowed each of us to have. Father, we're thankful for the, as we think about this week and the veterans that we've celebrated and the freedom that we have to have meetings like this and to be able to have our towns and to be able to have a place to live and businesses to run. And we pray for those that are meeting here today that the decisions are made in accordance to thy will but also to the help of each citizen that lives here. We pray that you continue with each one of them as they work through the decisions that need to be made, the decisions sometimes that are tough, sometimes that are fair. We pray that they do to your will all that can be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amber.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Dempsey.
Present.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Here.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed. Here. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of October 14th, 2025, regular meeting, the October 15th, 2025, and October 22nd, 2025, special call meeting, and the October 30th, 2025, quarterly joint meeting between council and the planning commission, and the October 30th, 2025 workshop meeting with the town council. Jeff, are all of these in order?
In order as formulated, the council has an amendment you'd like to make.
Okay, council, is there, are there any additions or corrections to any of these?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is awards and recognition. Amber or Dave, anything tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. And these are items that are not necessarily items that are, these are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion. We do go over these pretty significantly in our workshop and council members have the opportunity to get with individual directors if they have additional questions. If there is an item that council wants to pull off to have discussion on individually, we can do that. I do like to read all the items so those that are here in attendance or on TV know what we are voting on. We have a pretty long list tonight, so if you'll just bear with me. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year agreement with Thomason Hutton for sewer flow monitoring. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Thomason Hutton for a sewer flow model. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Thomason Hutton relative to the Amleville Road Stewart's Creek Basin Lift Station design. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Calgon Carbon for powder-activated carbon for the water treatment plant. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract for the town's onsite health center services for premise health. Item F is the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with BIS Digital for the procurement and installation of a courtroom recording system. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Recite Me for the procurement and installation of a website ADA compliance tool. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the state of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Strategic Technology Solutions to accept the fiscal year 23 cybersecurity grant. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with renewal with the Tennessee Highway Safety Office THSO for fiscal year 26 in the amount of $60,000. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a three-year contract with Flock Group Incorporated for police department flock cameras within town limits. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the foundation specialist, TFS, for the foundation repair at the Gregory Mill Park South restroom building. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Tim Payne Painting for the Event Center Painting. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Adams Contracting LLC for the Rock Springs Road over Rock Springs Branch Bridge repair. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute amendment number one with HMB Professional Engineers Incorporated for construction, engineering, and inspection CEI services for the Rock Springs over Rock Springs Branch Bridge repair. And item O is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Ragum Smith Associates for the update to the comprehensive plan. Unless there's an item that needs to be pulled off, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business, and there are four items that are public hearings tonight. Our first item is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on tax map 50, parcel 31. Kevin?
Yes, this is the plan of services. That is, it goes with the annexation request. It's the next item on your agenda. This is a, does detail the services that would be provided by the town upon the effective date of the annexation. Town would be providing all services in this instance. The planning commission held a public hearing, reviewed the plan of services, and did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Okay, questions or comments for Kevin on the plan of services for this property? Seeing none, it is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this plan of services. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, go to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property on tax map 50, parcel 31.00 requested by CLQ Land on behalf of Chow Windong, consisting, containing 21.7 acres. The property is located at 5198 Lee Road. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for annexation, R3 zoning. At 5198 Lee Road, it's about half a mile west of the intersection with Rocky Fork Road. The land use plan for this area is a 24 gateway character area. This is on the very western edge of that, supportive mix of uses such as hospitality and retail, restaurant, multifamily. That was pending or expectations of an interchange there, Rocky Fork and I-24. That's why that character is there. Surrounding zoning is PRD, which is Oak Meadows in town, in RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation as stated just a minute ago. This proposed zoning for this request is R3. A sewer main would be required to be extended from the Olive Branch sewer line to serve this site, and it would require an onsite easement to be attained, which is about 1,200 feet of sewer main to be extended, which would be at the expense of the developer. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
We have had quite a bit of conversation about this, but are there any additional questions or comments before we go to the public?
The only one I have is that the sewer extension will be required by property owner or developer of this property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
Just that we don't see a lot of R3 requests, so happy to have it.
Yep.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item at this time. If you'll come forward.
My first time.
Oh, so come right on up here. We'll walk you through it. So if you will state your name, your address, and if you live in the town limits, and then you'll have three minutes to address us.
I don't think I'll need that much.
Okay, that's fine.
You're gonna need three more.
Okay, okay. So your name?
Tanya Singleton.
And your address?
5297 Lee Road.
And do you live in the town limits?
Well, now I do.
Okay.
I mean, no, I don't. I'm sorry.
You don't.
She, my mother is the one that lives in that home.
Okay, perfect.
I'm just trying to figure out, we got this, and we're trying to figure out if her property's gonna be compromised, and if so, what, how do we go about it? What happens?
Okay.
So that's all I need.
And where did you say her property is located?
5297 Lee Road. It's pretty much right across the street from the one, the 5198.
Okay, perfect.
So just need to know what's gonna happen to her property.
Okay.
That's what I need to know.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think she was wanting to send the email out to everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? That was another one.
Yeah, that was another one.
That was Noel.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no one else, then we will close the public hearing. And before we move for a motion, I'm gonna let you address the 51, 5297, which I'm assuming has not been annexed.
That's correct. This is, the only annexation is the parcel, the 5198 parcel, correct.
And just so you all know, your parcel cannot be annexed unless you ask for annexation.
Thank you.
Okay?
Is she just gonna be moving from county to city limits?
No.
No.
She will not. Unless she asks to be annexed, she will not be in the city limits. The only parcel that will be in the city limits is this parcel and any others that have already been in, asked to be in the city limits. So only if she asks for her parcel to be inside the city limits will it be inside. Okay? Okay, so do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And if you have any other questions, you can get with Kevin after the meeting or email him. He'll be happy to answer those. Okay? Item C is our housekeeping item. It's a consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 25-32 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on tax map 50, parcel 31.00. Do I have a motion?
Show of you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to rezoning of the property located on tax map 55, parcel 11.12 owned by Unicorn Tennessee LLC, containing 91 one hundredths of an acre to go from a PID to a C2. The property is located west of Amleville Road. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for rezoning of this property. It's west of Amleville Road. It's about 450 feet south of the intersection with Quell Ridge Road. This property has no frontage on Amleville Road, but has access to it through adjoining parcels. Land use plan is, for this area is a 24 gateway character area, supportive, a mix of uses such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily. So this certainly would be consistent with our land use plan for that area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of PID and C2. This parcel was included in the PID for the adjoining tract of land, but was not ultimately used as a part of that development. And as a result, it was divided from the main parcel, sold separately. And so that new owner does want to, owns one of the adjoining commercial tracts and wishes to develop this tract with a commercial use. And so the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Talked quite a bit about this one and that it really was probably a better use for this piece of property than, yeah, it is.
I do have one question, Kevin. Kevin, will this stand alone as far as parking requirements?
It will have to unless they, since they do own an adjoining tract, there could be some sort of easement worked out. But as our plan for it would be that, we would assume it would stand alone for parking, yeah.
That come through a site plan.
That would be, certainly have to come over the site plan, yeah. But look, more specifically them, that was the plan that we were aware of.
Other questions before we go to the public?
Well, only question I've got, Kevin, is when, when a piece of property gets divided out of a PID like this, does the PID stay with it?
It does. And the original PID, really that area was really primarily just gonna be parking. And as the ultimate, as it was developed out, they didn't need it for parking. They didn't, they were able to park it without, without needing it. So it just kind of was left there.
So in other words, without rezoning it, it's currently would just be a parking lot?
That's all it could be, yeah.
Right, okay.
Does that still give the PID enough parking without, without that parcel?
Yeah, they have enough parking on their site without it, yeah.
Is that just cross-docking behind it?
I think there is some, there is cross-docking there, I think, but there is parking for the employees around it as well. I can't remember exactly where.
Is there ingress and egress out back?
The ingress, yeah, the ingress, egress.
It's only right outside the car wash on the Amleville Road.
Right, yeah, this is their ingress, egress is through that access right there and comes across. But this, this, they can use that place or they can go through the adjoining commercial tract just directly to the north as well. That's, that's.
And that would take them to the light? I'm just wondering about tractor trailers trying to get out in that curve right there.
Yeah, yeah.
I would bet.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. Yeah, that's something we looked at a lot when that all came through originally, yeah.
They try and, try to pull everybody to the traffic light.
Yeah.
Take something out, such as, when you're turning left into O'Reilly's.
Yeah.
There, coming from Amleville Road from the west.
Yeah, it seems like honestly that intersection by the car wash there eventually might have to be a light.
That's a state road.
State road.
Yeah, so they would dictate whether or not they would allow it.
Kevin, do you think it's worth, is it to the point that we need to look at, does it warrant a light there yet or no?
I mean, we could, I know we did, when we did the corridor study, I don't know if we looked at that or not, the corridor study. That's got a little age to it now anyway. I wouldn't be, it's probably far enough away from Midway. I don't know how far from one mile is probably far enough.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much right in the middle.
So, I mean, signalizing that at that, the industrial access point is probably, would make the most sense.
Has the one-mile signal done anything to assist a location like this? Because I know T-Dot doesn't like to put a bunch of signals in a row.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we would have to obviously work with T-Dot on it. I mean, that would, I would, it probably provides some gap there, just because it does, you have to stop there now. So people coming eastbound do get stopped there, so it might help some.
And could another signal actually harm the flow of traffic?
I think it would.
Yeah, that's what you'd have to look at, for sure.
Yeah, I think it'd be important or a big consideration might, is what they end up doing with this piece of property.
Right.
Right.
If this is something that's got, that adds quite a bit of volume, then it can be a bigger issue.
It's not that big of a piece of property.
It's not a big piece of property, right.
And then not enough parking too.
My assumption is it'll be some sort of retail.
Right.
Strip center of some type. I don't, probably not tremendous amount of increase in traffic.
Okay, sorry, I know we kind of went down a rabbit hole there, but.
It's okay.
So I know, I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments before we go to the public on Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Todd, was that you raising your hand?
Scratching.
Oh, scratching, okay, sorry. Don't scratch, don't scratch or you'll get called, kind of like a, kind of like an auction.
You just bought it.
That's right. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance amending Smyrna Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 6, Section 622, relative to the modified public transportation vehicles. Jeff?
Counsel, as we've discussed before, this is an amendment to the municipal code that further defines a modified public transportation vehicle, which is basically any vehicle that could transport more than 15 people and had been used for that purpose. And so part of this ordinance basically just deals with the locations of where they can be. So they shouldn't be in the front yard driveway or any area between the front building line and the street right away in the town limits.
Questions for Jeff on this? Seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
To approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move under new business. Item A under the planning, planning commission report, item A, number one, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of property on tax map 11, parcel 5.00 requested by 452 Properties LLC, containing 225.25 acres. The property is located on Mona Road east of I-40. It's my understanding that this item has been deferred.
They've requested it to be deferred, yes.
They have requested it to be deferred. And in case there are individuals that are here for this item, it has been deferred until December. Was that their request?
Yes.
Okay, which means that, which means that it will be on our workshop agenda, which will be?
Monday, November 24th.
Monday, November 24th for discussion, but not a vote. And then it is possible that it'll be up for a vote for?
December 9th.
December?
That's right.
December 9th at 5:00 PM here, that if it's not deferred again. Okay? I had a feeling there might be some that were here for that. So, okay, so Jeff, is there's no reason since they asked for it to be deferred that we need to vote on it?
If you, I would take action on it to defer.
Okay.
To defer it till December's meeting.
Okay, what, what, do we have to defer it till December? Or can we ask for it to be deferred until a contract is done? Because that's what we asked for last, last time.
I'll change my motion. I'd like to make a motion to defer it until either the December meeting or prior, or after, until the contract is signed.
The, the contract with CUD?
Right.
Whichever is, is later.
Whichever's later, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
That's what I meant to say.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? For those that are here, there is a contract that has to be signed between CUD and Hillwood as well as the town. And the council does not wish to see this project back before us until the agreement between CUD and Hillwood has been worked out, so then we then could take action. So, and it is my understanding after talking to Mr. Goodson with CUD that they are hopeful that that will go before their board next week for discussion, and that is also an open meeting. Okay?
I wonder, Mayor, if there's, I don't know if there's a really way to notify people if it's gonna get deferred again. We find out a lot of times just at the last minute. So it's a little inconvenience to many of you to come to.
I would say if they email Amber Hobbs before the meeting, and I would recommend waiting maybe till that day, because I don't think we found out about this till yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, that's correct.
So if prior to coming to the meeting, you wanna send an email to Amber and just ask if it's been deferred again, you're more than welcome to do that.
Is there email on?
Amber, and it's amber.hobbs@townofsmyrna.org, or it's on our town website. Huh?
And Mayor, them to speak, they need to get on the public comment list.
They can either get on the public comment list or they can wait till second reading, which will be the public hearing, either one. Okay, we have a motion and a second for deferral until the contract with CUD is, is executed. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Deferral is passed. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28K, group A, parcel 1.00. It's owned by Arsani Gabrielle, containing 28 one hundredths of an acre to go from R3 to C4. The property is located at 519 Noel Lane. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for rezoning. Property at 519 Noel Lane, which is the corner of Noel Lane and Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan would support medium density single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is R1, R3, R6, and PCD, which is a, that PCD allows C4 uses, but also, it came through as a PCD to allow for the additional use of alcohol sales, which are not allowed in C4. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Five, four, two against. Staff does recommend approval.
Steve or Mark, anything you wanna say about this?
We, we had quite a bit of discussion about this one. And I know since the meeting, I've received an email from a neighbor there that would like to know a little bit more about it. I don't know if that neighbor's even here or not, but I think some explanation. Kevin, did you have a chance to respond to the?
I did not. I had every intention of doing that today, and it was just one thing I didn't get to. I can, I mean, some of the questions were, what are, what's the proposed use at this time? I don't know.
We didn't know that, yeah.
What's the proposed use? They, they just asked for the C4 zoning.
So kind of give an overview of what those C4 items can be, because it can't just be anything commercial.
That's correct. C4 is, it's a neighborhood service business district. It certainly would allow for any type of like office-type use, professional offices, you know, doctor, dentist, real estate attorney, that kind of thing. Would also allow for smaller-scale commercial uses though too, such as a retail establishment, it could be there, a hair salon, you know, things of that nature. It would allow for restaurants, but not fast-food restaurants. It would not allow for gas stations, convenience stores, those kind of things. And as I said, we referenced with the, the PCD is to cross the street. Alcohol and tobacco sales would not be allowed in that zone. So that's, that's the type of uses that would be allowed in a C4. And of course, the zoning ordinance is available on the website if somebody wanted to go there, see the, the specific list as well.
So in planning, we talked about this quite a bit, and the email we got, I believe, is from 517, which is the house immediate.
Directly next door.
Next door.
Yeah.
Who's also directly across from the PCD, right? And, and most of her questions were about what's gonna happen to her property, which again, same thing applies. Nothing if you don't request it. We, when we talked about this, this road, this house does face Noel Lane, which gave us a little bit of concern, but it is obviously on the corner of Old Nashville Highway. The two houses behind it, or really the three houses behind it, as you go up Old Nashville Highway, all rear, the rear of them face Old Nashville Highway, so it would not make a lot of sense that they would ever go commercial unless they were torn down and rebuilt. So we didn't really see this as kind of like, you know, an expansion of overreaching commercials, especially since it was a soft C4 zone and not C2 or some other excessive use. There were two members that voted against it, both of them, pretty much was the same reasons we've denied commercial residential before, is just because it's a residential district and this is a commercial request.
And I totally see where y'all are coming from, but I guess because the other ones wouldn't possibly probably be commercial, I guess I have some heartburn of just the one, even though there is the strip center. I guess I have some heartburn of just the one, even though there is the strip center next to it, so. But I, but I understand where y'all are coming from, too, so.
Some of the questions, some other questions she had, had to do with the construction. And, um, how would that affect them as far as noise and time to be able to work on the construction? Those types of things, and I don't know that we generally address those, but I thought they were good questions.
Sure, yeah, I mean, the, there's, there's limitations on the hours that people are supposed to be working. Not on Sunday at all, uh, seven to six, Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturday. Those are the limitations on the hours. Certainly, uh, if the use changes, a buffer strip would be required on her, that side, as well as the rear, uh, because they would be boarding residential, um, so there would be a landscape buffer strip required there. Again, I don't know if the, the plan is to tear down the house and rebuild with a commercial building, or reuse the house, convert the house into some sort of commercial use. Uh, I really don't know the answer to that, certainly, at this time. Parking, uh, obviously depends on the use, they would have to be able to park on their site. So, that's gonna limit it somewhat, just because the size of the property is not very big. Uh, that's gonna limit probably the uses that would really fit there anyway.
And we... Kevin, I've got one question, and maybe Mark and Steve can answer this. What's a good stopping point for commercial along Old Nashville? Or are we, does a comprehensive plan look at those properties all the way up in front of St. John's Woods to be commercial, up to the apartments?
I'm trying to remember, certainly going towards Sam Ridley Parkway, um, from Noel. Long-term, I think probably there, or a mixture of things. You know, the track across the street's pretty large, and it might end up being a mixture of things there. As you go south towards Enon Springs, we have, we have like an Old Nashville Highway, we kinda, because there's a lot of mixture of things through there, there is some commercial, there's still some residential. And then, you know, if you go all the way down to Hazel Woods, you got some, some apartments and the mobile home parks and different things. And so, we kinda have, we kinda, we didn't have a blanket, one or the other, kind of, kind of a mixture of things is allowed along Old Nashville Highway, really. This area was, we kept residential just because of the existing residential neighborhood that was there. We didn't anticipate or plan for necessarily that that area would be into that, but...
Specifically, I think it was kind of in the Sam Ridley, Oak Rock Springs area, we kinda talked about the layering, right? Where you have commercial in the front, and you have maybe, um, maybe multifamily ti- ti- townhomes, apartments, and then you have the single family, that's kind of a staggered step. I, I'll, I'll be honest, if this was not on Old Nashville Highway, I would not be in support of it at all. The very next house, 517, uh, by itself, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. Now, the question is, if this one goes C4 and 517 wanted to go C4, what would we do then, right? How far, how far do we allow it to go into the neighborhood? But, um, my, my biggest view was there's, there's so much of Old Nashville Highway that is commercial, that it, it just, this is one of the few pieces of property that actually have road frontage on Old Nashville Highway that could kinda be used that way.
They'll be accessing from Noel Lane, correct?
They will be, right, but like these, the houses right beside it with the back of them, they're not, really not conducive for commercial property, so there's some that couldn't, I mean, they could, but it most likely would never go commercial.
The thing is impact to the existing property owners, and, you know, I went through that years ago when I bought a property and, and requested it be zoned C4. And it depends on what they're gonna put in there as far as, you know, if it's professional, it'll be a low, low impact. But, you know, what's, what's the, that you can see is the most obtrusive use?
I mean, it would be if somebody wanted to put...
Probably a restaurant.
A restaurant, even, it, it wouldn't be a fast food, it couldn't have a drive-through, but that would probably be the most intense.
Or a strip, strip.
I mean, you could have a...
Do you think it would have enough parking to be able to do that?
I think that would, I think, I think the size of the lot would make it hard to, to do a restaurant there. I mean, to have enough parking to have a restaurant.
Do we have any inclination of?
They, they have not, no, at this time, I don't know.
So, I got a question, I guess, I don't, uh... I supported this at planning, and then after I got the email, maybe kinda go through all the thought process again, but, to Jerome's point, how do you protect it if it's not a, a, I guess, a PCD or PUD? You, you really, or PID, you don't have any oversight to C4, right? So, could we, if we wanted to as a body, take a C4 and put restrictions on that C4? Or would we rather have them come in as a pod?
You, either, you know, you had, really have to vote up or down on the C4, or you couldn't really put, you can't put restrictions on it. Certainly, you could, you could send it back to planning, and say, or send it...
For the lowest impact? If, if you do a, if it's a salon, or office, or a, something like that, I don't think there's much of any impact on any of the neighbors there. But I can see a little bit about their point, especially the one directly behind it. Yeah, or beside it, feeling the pressure of a strip retail, um, or something to that effect. If this were a subdivision that was wrapped with similar zoning, you know, I, I could see certainly why it ought to go. But, this one's a little spotty, and, um...
So, it makes me, it's bring, you're, you're, as you're talking, it's making me think. So, they've asked for straight C4 zoning, and what we're saying is that there's some things in C4 that we wouldn't like to see here, like a restaurant or a strip. Well, we can if we change C4 zoning in a, in another conversation. I'm not talking about in this particular instance, but if we've got concerns about what C4, the whole reason C4 exists is it's softer than C2. If there's things in C4 we really don't wanna see in a C4 subdivision, then maybe we need to revisit C4 zoning.
Well, but there's already a...
But in some areas, but in some areas, the majority of stuff in C4, I'm okay, yeah. And so, and, and I'll be honest, it's kinda what I, if like the next four lots all could end up being C4 and in work... Yes, but I just, I don't see, like you've said from the beginning, I don't see that, that happening.
There is a zoning called PNO, which is office structure only, right? They've, have, obviously asked for a higher grade, of course, they face a five-lane road, so I kinda get it. But, I was just thinking through that, there's probably a softer way to bring this in because of all the, all the residents right around it that are not zoned the same, or may not ever be zoned the same.
Let me add one more thing. Kevin, did you say you had a call from someone, one of these adjacent neighbors? Is this the piece of property from the Planning Commission that was also interested?
No, I didn't have anybody else that was interested, that was a different request.
Okay, different request.
Um, the, I have had a couple of emails since the meeting, the one, this one, and then another one I got late, late last week, I think on Friday, from one of the other, one of the other adjoining neighbors.
Cause I was thinking, like you said, if it was multiple people interested in doing this.
It sounds like what I'm hearing everybody say is we would rather see a PID here, or PNO.
PNO or a piece like a PCD.
But I'll be honest, I'm not sure that I'm even comfortable with that, with it being right there all by itself. I think it being residential is what works.
Unless everything around it fits the zone, right?
And that, that's where I'm at, but if the rest of y'all are more, are, if y'all are okay with PNO, I can't support that.
And I don't see it as spot zoning. You know, that's one of the things that we always look at, is this spot zoning, does it really fit? And it goes either way, just like y'all said. Yeah, I mean, well, on both sides, right across Catty Corner this way and that way, and then probably these houses that are on the bottom are gonna be...
With the exception of that one corner.
No, right here is, this is a PUD right here, the bottom of the street.
Okay, it is, the cow pasture?
No, it's just beside it, at the bottom where it says rezoning.
Veterinary clinic and all that there.
Okay.
Yeah, just at the very bottom of the map, that's all PUD.
I think it'll be a long time.
I think, I think that's a little further down.
Oh, it's a little further, okay, maybe it's the next lot, it's the next lot.
That's the cow pasture.
Yeah, it's the next lot.
That cow pasture may not be a cow pasture forever, right?
It may be a long time, but, yeah. So, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to deny.
Okay, a motion to deny, do I have a second? A motion and a second to deny? Any discussion?
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with the denial myself. I know we did it in planning, but I see both sides on this one, this particular one, and council's not.
I think there's a path forward if we could, you know, work with what type of zoning would really fit better.
So...
Well, PCD, they can make it fit.
A specific, a specific use.
And maybe, Steve, you need to elaborate a little bit on what you see that fits there and doesn't fit there, that's in the C4 zone. Yeah, well, I think what we've talked about, right, an office space, maybe a dental office, maybe an accountant office.
Professional office, which is PNO.
Yeah, then we drop the PNO. The biggest thing is minimal, mi- minimal traffic impact, right? Minimal parking impact, that's the biggest thing. So, I, I don't even know specific uses, but it's really about minimal impact.
Hours as well, operation hours.
Well, sure, yeah, yeah, and the prefer, office, obviously, is more limited.
You brought it up, Jerome, your old business there, the, the Thomas Hutton office.
Yeah, we, we had, there was on two opposing corners.
You, you met with both of those, as I recall, yeah.
And, and, but what I did, I went around and spoke with the neighbors, said, hey, here's what I wanna put here. Is it, is there any opposition? Cause I was not gonna invest that money redoing that property.
You did a good job with that.
Is your, is your zone Z4?
C4.
Or PUD?
C4.
C4.
Just curious, yeah.
Okay, so Kevin, does that give you some diger- some direction if the landowner has some, okay? So, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes to deny. Item three is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 28J, Group A, Parcel 2.00, to go from R3 to C4. It's requested by James and, and Angela Schmidt. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately seventy-two one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 1205 Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for rezoning, 1205 Rock Springs Road, it's about eight hundred, eight hundred feet east of the intersection with Spring Hill Drive. Uh, land use plan for this area, basically all the tracks on the north side of, I'm sorry, the south side of Rock Springs Road, are, even though it's off Rock Springs Road, are in their, by our land use plan, in our, the Sam Ridley character area, which would support a combination of retail uses and services. Surrounding zoning is R3, C2, and C4. Just as an informational item, the rear, approximately seventy feet of this property on the eastern boundary line and approximately a hundred and twenty feet on the western boundary line, uh, do lie, does lie within the floodway and about an additional fifteen feet or so, uh, beyond that floodway line is in the hundred-year floodplain. But it still leaves approximately a hundred and fifty feet in depth on the west, western side, and a hundred and eighty feet in depth on the eastern boundary line, that is outside of the flood hazard area, so it still has adequate area there for, for development, um, if you choose to rezone it. Uh, the Planning Commission did recommend, did review this, did recommend approval, six for, uh, zero against, one abstention. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this, or Steve, Mark, I know you are abstaining from this.
I actually know the applicant, they're friends of mine, and I'm gonna be helping them along the way, doing something with that property, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to discuss it or vote on it.
Okay, Steve, anything you wanna add?
So, obviously, Kevin, can you put the other map up that shows zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this was mostly the same conversation we just had, but what's different about this one is everything's already C4. And the one lot beside it that's R1, we, we understand that that owner is probably gonna be coming in for the same request. So, basically, everything on Rock Springs Road would be C4.
They got separation with the, uh...
Yeah, well, with the floodway in the back, it's kind of a natural buffer, right?
And, and that property owner actually submitted for December.
Okay, so, so that other property has submitted.
Right, since, since the meeting last week.
That's the one I was...
Right, that's correct, correct.
Yeah, so, I wanted everybody to see this map because it makes it look, you know, it, it almost sounds like the same one we just looked at, but this is a lot different zoning.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And Amber, we have one abstention. Item four is consideration regarding the acceptance of two tracts of land to be donated to the town by Drapac for use of a fire station in a public park.
Yeah, this is a recommendation from Planning Commission that is accompanies the next item on your agenda. This is, uh, an offer of, it's a donation of two, two separate parcels, or tracts of land that would be divided off of a larger parcel. One tract totals approximately three point three-five acres, would be used to build a fire station. The other tract totals approximately forty-two point four-eight acres and would be used as a park. Uh, the land donation would be in lieu of the payment of impact fees from this development up to that maximum dollar amount established as a part of the separate agreement, that's the next item on your agenda. We did include, um, the, the legal descriptions, um, as, as, and everything, and the parcels there, and the locations of those parcels, um, as well as the, the map that's on the screen there. Uh, the Planning Commission did review these, uh, the obtaining of these parcels, found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions or comments on this?
So, the, the amount of impact fees, if I'm figuring this right, or got the numbers right, is like two point three million, almost two point three-five million. Is that correct? And, um, that will be, um, for the donation, we're offsetting, uh, impact fees.
Public safety and park impact.
Okay. And, and I think I asked this question last time. We'll have a passive park there, and I guess the next one's, uh, fire station. Do they have internal passive parks within their development? And I guess what I'm getting to, are we just, you know, giving them impact fees to get the land and us foot the cost for all of the amenities in there?
Yeah, they would still have the, the amenities inside their development as well.
What kinda, do you know the scope of amenities they may have?
Um, I can't recall all the specifics. They're kinda scattered around the development. I think there was a pool in there, I think there was, certainly some playgrounds in there, some different things. I can't remember exactly.
And, and the reason I say that, I just don't wanna set a precedence of big developments coming in and us taking on putting in the amenities for them.
And I don't disagree, I think this one's a little different in regards to the, um, the lawsuit, as well as the, this allowing us to have four, four cars on a pad versus the two cars on the pad. But, I hear what you're saying. Dave, you kinda gave a signal that you wanted to...
So, I, I think we, when we have PRDs, they're required to put amenities within that development. This does not offset that requirement for them to have their amenities within their development. These are going to be amenities that are public amenities. They do have a connection to that passive park, um, through a, a greenway entrance, as, at least as, as that's how they're showing it. But, we will also have, um, frontage where we're gonna be able to put parking and potentially some, some other amenities that will be public amenities, and it will be public accessed.
Are we, are, are they going to pay for those, or we're now fitting the bill for what is to go in the park?
I understand the land.
No, I'm asking. I'm asking, is that what your, your question is?
I've got an issue is, have they put in enough, uh, amenities in their, um, pod? Or are we coming in and supplementing it at the town's cost? So, my next question to your response would be, if we was buying park property, would this be the ideal park property we would buy in that, that linear shape that those, that track is? Or would we prefer a more centralized location with a different type, shape to it?
Sure, well, I think the first thing I would say to that is, land is at a premium, and when we can get it for, for park use, um, we should evaluate that, and, and we did. And I did have, uh, Mr. Moss go out there to evaluate this when we were considering, uh, this arrangement. And so, I'd be happy to bring him up and talk about what he saw out there and some of the, uh, some of the opportunities we have to add this space to our park inventory that provides some things that we don't currently have. But, to, to Mayor Reed's point, in the context of the, uh, the lawsuit disagreement, whatever you wanna call it, that, that we, we had... Um, but to, to Mayor Reed's point, in the context of the, uh, the lawsuit disagreement, whatever you wanna call it, that, that we, we had, um, and from my perspective, the, uh, getting the, the public safety land for a, a fire station fits within the study activity that was conducted to look at our long, long range planning on that one. Okay, and then the, the park space, uh, again, with the evaluation of what, what this could be as, uh, as a passive park with some, uh, terrain walking trails and, and those sorts of things. In the front, our vision, again, is to have, uh, some, some limited parking to access that as well as potentially, uh, maybe a, a picnic gazebo area where, where folks could go and use as well. And so it's, it's gonna be, we're hoping, just a little bit more of an active component towards the front with the passive component in that long linear section.
So we have long range vision that there'll be more citizens using that than just predominantly Linwood or the Dray Pack development.
I think so.
They'll at least have the option. Um, all the amenities inside the development are for that development, so without this, there's no option, right? At least now they would have the option. I, I was kinda thinking about where you were going, if, if we had, what did you say, impact fees were two point something million?
Two point three five.
If we had two point three five million to spend, would we go buy it on this property? Now, first of all, the three acre fire hall is probably over half of that. That's, that's premium land on Ammival Road with two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. I mean, that's probably a million easily, if not more. So if you said now would we buy this property for a million dollars, I don't know that we could buy this much acreage for a million dollars. So, to, but we're not spending out cash, I know it ultimately is a trade-off, but it's not actually cash out of our pocket now, it's over time. So those impact fees would take some time to recoup anyway, and we'd still have a park issue out there. By the time these develop, the closest park Cedarstone, so at some point we would have to, I would think we would want, as our parks plan, to put something out there anyway.
Yeah, I think something up on that end since we've already annexed out Ammival Road.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, you know, could there be a better, better centralized location than tucked within this development? That's, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, because the guidelines, when this was originally done, how long ago? When was this PRD brought in?
Twenty fifteen, I think.
How long?
Ten years.
I think twenty fifteen, I believe.
Twenty fifteen, so ten years ago, which have changed. So, Jeff Peach, kinda help me a little bit. Let's say that we decided to, let's say that this got turned down tonight. Then what happens?
Well, then we would, uh, obviously we would move forward, there's a, there's a stay right now on the litigation that, that we have. And so obviously that stay would be removed and we would move forward with, uh, the dispute regarding whether or not to have, uh, two parking spaces on the pad or, or, or four.
So if we voted not to, one, we'd be in litigation for no telling how much that it might cost us. In addition to that, if we lost, we also could have to have, how many homes, Kevin?
There's, uh, well, there's twelve hundred houses and three hundred townhomes.
So, fifteen hundred with only two lots, two spots on, so totally hear what you're saying Jerome, but I think when we weigh out, kind of where we're at.
So basically this is part of the litigation agreement.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
That's a tough one.
It is. It is. So. Uh, but Steve, I, I totally agree with what you said, I mean, we know that we're gonna need a fire station out on that end. And when we look at what that is, it may not be exactly where we would like a park to be in the exact spot. But I think when you weigh the other things that we're also looking at with this.
Well, I know what Mike can do with a not-so-desirable piece of land. I've, I've seen it happen, okay? But my concern is that, that, you know, we don't set a precedence in that it is designed in a way that it welcomes the whole community.
Yeah, and I agree, I think, I think we're try, I think we're kind of, um.
That is some rough land out there. Mike and I allude to it as building on the moon. It's kinda like a lot of outcroppings.
Yeah, so be careful, I'm a person.
I didn't say they're rough people, that's the, the property.
Any other, any other comments or questions, um, about this? Okay.
Dave gave me the head nod to come up here, so I, um, I'll make it quick. I did walk that property with a couple of staff members and some other folks, and, uh, it is, it is rough, it's a dry creek bed, but it does lend itself to some, some good promise, and they sweeten the pot when adding a couple acres towards the front for some green space. If you ever go out Cedarstone Park, um, you'll know that most of the green space there is turf and it stays booked up. There's not a whole lot of good land for people to go out and throw football, frisbee, run their dogs, whatever, so it does have some promise there. Um, in our Parks Master Plan, we call for some neighborhood parks. All those parks are not always planned where they're going, sometimes there are opportunities. Rock Springs Park or Paul Johns Park was an opportunity, it was donated land to the town, um, cause it couldn't be built on, and it was similar to this, except a lot smaller. Um, and sometimes these things, uh, work a little different too. Um, there's not a whole lot of people knocking down our door to, to give us parkland, but, uh, I did have a call, um, about some property contiguous to this that Dave asked me to look into, and, uh, I'll be talking to Dave and Todd about that in the next day or two as well.
One more question I have.
Yes, sir.
Was, was this left open, has green space within the pud initially? And the second question is, was this developable land as far as, um, more houses?
I'll let Kevin answer that one.
It was left open as open space, cause there is some floodplain through that area, like he was referencing from the dry creek bed. So it, it's not really developable, like buildable, so it was, but it was, it was not part of their, really their amenity package.
But it was being counted as part of their open space.
Certainly it was, it was part of their open space, certainly, yeah. They're still meeting the requirements without it, but it was counted as part of it, certainly, yeah.
And if it's approved, that just lends to a, helping the neighborhood even that much more, if they wanna use it, uh, to, uh, you know, we, we've been fortunate really with Fire Station Four, for example. You know, that area began to grow and that land was donated for that, and we're trying to do that anywhere we can in the right spots.
We're paying for the land, you know.
Yeah.
By offset of the impact fees.
Yeah, you are in this case.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at least you've got, uh, sites that meet the areas that, that land's available. And if we swap out impact fees to gain that site, I think it makes all the sense in the world.
Other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Move on to new business, item B, consideration and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement between the Town of Smyrna and Stars and Stripes, three H, three L, and thirty, relative to the Linwood.
Lee, we just talked about this for the last, uh, little bit, this is the agreement that sets forth, uh, things that we, you just mentioned in your discussion as far as, uh, it's basically an impact fee development agreement. Um, and so, uh, as we just stated as well, for the, the public safety impact fees and the park impact fees, to also include, um, up to seven and a half acres of grading and clearance, uh, for the town as well. And so, um, I think we've kinda gone over that quite a bit, unless, unless you want me to comment further.
Council, other questions?
Move to approve, there.
For motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a dis- second, any discussion?
I understand the, your vote from before, um, I guess I'm trying to understand what the alternative would be. Do you have a proposed alternative?
Well, in my, in my mind, we would find a more centrally located and more, I guess, appeasing piece of property to invest the money into, to develop a property. This seems like a trade-out to appease a lawsuit, and, um, I know it's gonna be used, but I think it's gonna be, um, I think we could do better as far as locating the, the piece of park and, um, spending the money more wisely.
So allow, let them keep that as green space.
Right.
But we go locate another property.
In there.
I don't believe we can put an actual value on having the four parking spots out in front ra- rather than the two. I mean, we've seen the places across town that, that gave us the catalyst to, to change the ordinance so that all of them have four now. And, uh, imagining a subdivision of that magnitude with that many that just had two on it, um, I, I, I see great value in that, is what I'm saying.
Which is what it was originally approved for.
Exactly.
That's what it was approved for back ten years ago.
Well, and which.
Before we recognized that we had to make those changes.
Well, then we get back into, you know, where do the, where does the ordinance apply, the nature of the lawsuit.
Right.
It's not worth it.
I guess that's the question I got, Jerome, I.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not opposed to your perspective, right, I, I agree. I think if we had, if there wasn't a lawsuit, if we had four parking spots, then were we just looking for parkland? This probably isn't where we would go by and we probably could spend that money somewhere else.
And that's what money is the water, the whole.
But with all the other.
Whole legal aspect.
But with other, the other caveats, I mean, okay, let's say we deny this, what's, what do we do about those other issues? We, we can go buy another property, but we can't fix those other issues otherwise. So that's my concern with it is, I, I'm, I agree with you, it's not ideal park spot space, but the fire hall is good, very good property.
I've got no issue with the fire hall side.
And the four parking spots, if you've been out in, where's it, uh, Amberton, is that where it's at? You go out to Amberton and you drive to there where there's only two spots. And, uh, to me, that's just not even an option.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and you add to that what Chief and his department would have to deal with, with fifteen hundred residential places that only allowed two spots on a, on a pad. Um, I think we would, we would have, um, you'd be spending quite a bit of time, but not only that, but also what the fire department would have to deal with trying to get around those cars to get to serve if there was a fire.
I think Jerome's points are very valid, they are very valid.
Absolutely, I, one, if, if it wa- if we weren't in the situation we're in, I would totally agree.
On the flip side is, if you do go find, as a difference, you do go find a different site, we don't know what that cost would be to down here.
Well, and I guess that next question leads to, uh, the, the, Mr. Peach here is, just take the park out of it. You know, the impact fees swap the park, and we're going to litigation about two spaces versus four. Do we have a leg to stand on?
Well, obviously, I'm a good attorney.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, forget the fact that you're a good attorney.
I might wanna re-ask that question, Castle.
Yeah.
And, and however, I, I would really, uh, as we've, some of this I would rather discuss in, in a executive session.
Sure, sure, I get it.
But I, I will say that obviously I don't control, uh, what happens in court.
Right.
And so, uh, when we looked at this and then looked at it with, uh, Mr. Santucci, it just, it appeared to us as a win-win just because of, of, of the property, the fire hall, and we were able to settle this, which could be, uh, almost catastrophic for public safety and just for aesthetics, uh, out in that neighborhood, but.
There's a high risk.
Right, right, and so.
Going to court.
Uh, so it's just, uh, on, on this one, yeah, if, if I felt that it, there was ninety-nine or a hundred percent, I would probably tell you that, but, uh, I can't say that right now.
But it's not a, a thing of possibly going to court, it's in court.
Oh, we're already in court.
It's just, we, we're already in court, but not only that, if we choose to go that route, we know for a fact we'll lose the fire station, no matter what. We'll lose that property, that property's gone.
That's correct.
So, and how much would it probably cost us to go out there and purchase property for a fire station out there?
And or a park.
Right.
And or a park, so if you.
You gotta find the right site, first of all.
It probably still costs us two, like, two million or more.
Yeah, so, um, okay, so, um, that's what I was gonna ask, do I have a motion, so any other discussion on item eight B? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, then we'll move on to item C, consideration of resolution adopting the Town of Smyrna logo, branding guidelines, and proposed usage agreement for outside entities.
Yes, Mayor, um. This was on workshop, this, uh, was also on, on a previous agenda, so we have worked to, um, on a, on a new logo, and, um, this is to adopt the usage of that logo, which would be consistent with, um, marketing, correspondence, um, T-shirts, things of that nature, anything official coming from the town would still, of course, use the logo. This is, excuse me, the, the seal, so this is not a replacement of our seal in any way, shape, or form. Um, happy to address any questions that you may have, um, and this also, uh, has a component of when outside entities would need to, uh, or request to use our logo and the method in which that would be, um, handled. Uh, that is generally, I think, through state law, uh, approval by the mayor, which can be deferred to, to myself, uh, which I think was, was something that you had a concern about. Um, so there is a request and agreement of use of the town logo that accompanies this, uh, for, for any use of the logo outside of Town of Smyrna.
Okay. Questions on this?
I think, Mayor, you mentioned last time, I think it listed you directly as the.
As mayor, mayor's designate.
Right, right, and you put that in there, and I guess when it comes to you, Dave, if there's, like, something you're really not sure of, you would bring it to the council as far as outside use or what they're gonna use it for.
If it got to that.
Yeah.
Other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is consideration of resolution establishing the dates, times, and place of the regular meetings and work sessions of the town council for calendar year twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Did we discuss, is this the calendars and the time? And we discussed about the public meeting being at the beginning of each agenda item.
We were gonna bring that and talk about it at the work, at the next workshop.
Okay, at work session.
Yeah. Okay, so a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is item E, which is consideration of appointment of one member to serve on the planning commission for an unexpired, unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-six. I will be appointing Vanessa Haley to the planning commission. Um, and item F is consideration of an appointment of one member to the Limeball Library Board of Directors to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-seven. Steve, um, I know that you and Lisa met with both applicants today.
Yeah, um, so we had, uh, Mr. Gross had, um, decided to come off of the board, so we posted that to, uh, fill his spot. We've had two applicants, uh, we talked to Ms. Fredericks, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what Lynn's last name was.
Reynolds.
Reynolds, and Ms. Reynolds, honestly, both applicants are great, um, I think they would be good, they're both, uh, um, I think moderate, middle of the road. That, they're gonna be, um, um, they're both qualified as far as their expertise. Ms. Fredericks was a lib, is a librarian in Nolansville, uh, for Williamson County Schools and, uh, did very well. Uh, but during this process, um, today, um, our court clerk, Ms. Brewer, also told, conveyed us that she's going to be resigning as well. So that being said, there's actually, both positions will be open. Um, so what I've suggested is that we, um, pick one of these two. Um, so what I've suggested is that we, um, pick one of these two candidates and then continue to leave the position open for another month for other applicants to apply if they're interested. And they either take the second applicant we already have or continue to interview any others that apply and appoint a second person starting in December. Um, but, um, my recommendation for tonight would be Ms. Fredericks. Um, I think she, she applied previously. This is her second, uh, attempt to get on the board. Um, I've talked to her both times and, uh, I think she will be, um, a balancing, uh, force on the, on the board.
Okay, so, um, this is council recommendation and majority vote. So I'll open the floor for nominations at this time.
Which I would nominate Ms. Fredericks, yeah.
Angela Frederick.
Yeah, that's right.
Angela Frederick. Any other nominations? I'll close the Florida nominations and all in favor of Angela Frederick to serve, uh, the unexpired term ending in 2027, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. And Amber, will y'all get in touch with her?
And then I've also asked Heather to keep the position posted on social media, so we'll continue to take applications for anyone else that would like to apply. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is, uh, there's a six-year, two-term limit for this board and this term will not apply towards her limit because she's finessing Mr. Gross's term. She should still will have six years of eligibility at the end of this term in 27.
Are we sure about that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the same would apply with the unexpired term in December as well.
Okay. Um, Amber, will you put the, uh, and put it on our workshop for the library as well? Okay. Okay. Item G is consideration of the appointment of three members to serve on the municipal industrial development board, one member to serve an unexpired term ending in 2027, one member to serve a term ending in 2030, and one member to serve a term ending in 2031. We had no one apply, so there's not anything we can vote on with this tonight. If there is someone that's interested, we encourage you to apply. You do get a free barbecue meal out of it and you only have to meet one time a year unless there's an issue and I don't, when has it ever met?
I served on it for years and we did, we met once a year and.
And you got fed.
We had lunch and we, uh, we approved minutes and most of the time went home.
So you approved minutes of eating the year before.
That's correct.
Got it.
Don't you appoint officers at that meeting or something?
It's, I would strongly suggest anybody that wants to get involved, this is the one to get involved in.
And Mayor, I will say, I, my intent with your blessing is to not put this back on, um, prior to our March regular appointments, simply because this meets before we even get back together again for the next workshop and then it won't meet again until November 2026. So we can actually put this on for regular appointments again in March and no, no harm done.
And you and I had discussed today that for you to have a quorum, all four members have to show up, so we need to make sure that we, that we are calling those four members to make sure that they're showing up for beans and barbecue.
They do some good work once in a while with this IDB board, though. I mean, you know, Smyrna housing authority and years ago, there was a lot done. Uh, we didn't just eat lunch, but, but they're, it's a, they're pretty simple meetings, so.
But it's, it's statutorily required that they meet once a year is the reason that we have to do that. I know we joke about it, but it is a board that is required, so.
So, not, are we done with that one? I want to go back to the previous one.
Yes, and, I mean, there's nothing to vote on, so we won't, we will not put that back, we will not open that back up to the public until our March meeting since they're, they will be meeting between now and Thanksgiving.
But they can apply.
But they can apply anytime for when we appoint in March.
Yeah, actually, I want to go back to E. Um, we, you appointed Vanessa Haley to planning. She's currently on Board Design Appeals, so she will come off of Board Design Appeals and we'll need to post that opening so that we can take applications to fill that position.
When will be her first planning? December?
Her first planning meeting will be December.
So we need to notify Matt Carver. He's getting ready to move and that's the reason this opened up, but I know he'd be willing as long as he still owns his home here to help, but I, I told him I'd let him know. So we just need to notify him that Vanessa's going to be stepping in.
And we so appreciate Matt's service. The planning commission is a tough board. It's a lot of studying, so we appreciate all of Matt's help. Okay, we'll move on to item nine. Anything under other tonight?
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay. Um, Sierra, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I have a slide for state shared tax for September. We received seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And for the next slide, local sales tax, we received just shy of one point eight million. So we're still tracking, almost right on track.
Well, people are already starting to, um, to shop for Christmas and so HG, anything?
You know, I would say something about that. Mostly just, um, buy your Christmas presents locally.
Steve's been shopping local, I hear.
Yeah.
Did you hear?
Down, down the Plaid Store.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I think you sent some people down there, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. Sent some, sent some aunts and uncles.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve Johns had some crap to say. I told him not to be such a sore loser.
There's a comment about my fat head, too.
Yeah, there was. It's in the back office.
You might explain that is.
Um, Sierra, thank you for this.
Sorry, Sierra. I just didn't have that at home.
Uh, any correspondents or announcements tonight? Nope. Okay, then, um, uh, anything from directors or department heads? Amber Lou?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So we met about this earlier and wanted to give the public an opportunity again to, uh, engage with us through our My Smyrna app, which is now available on both, uh, the Apple Store and Google Play. This is a new way for citizens to not only report non-emergency issues that may be happening around town into the Town of Smyrna, uh, for those issues to be addressed and resolved, but also, uh, opportunity to receive notifications that me, we may want to push out to our constituents through the app, uh, for happenings that are taking place around town, events, outages, things like that. So there's QR code on the screen. You can either, uh, go ahead and follow that QR code to download that app or you can, uh, go to townofsmyrna.org and go to the how do I tab and report an issue. And all of the information about the app and the way that you can use that is on that landing page.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll have some other exciting news that'll come along with that.
Right next.
Right, right next. Good.
Right next, right next.
Right now.
Right now, yeah.
I was thinking y'all forgot already. I was like, where?
Nope, nope. There it is. Yeah, so one of the ways we're going to look to, uh, not only promote the app, but just promote our town and, and some of the holiday cheer that, that goes around this time of year is we have, uh, started this initiative this year. It's called Highlight Smyrna and we're going to use that My Smyrna app to, to do this. And so basically what, what it, what you can do is if, if you're a homeowner and you, you, you love to be the Clark Griswold of the neighborhood, uh, you're going to have the ability to, uh, go onto our My Smyrna app and tell us a little bit about your, you know, load your home onto the app and, and take a picture of that home. And so we're going to have a nice, uh, map, hopefully, of excellent, uh, holiday decorations throughout the town that, that citizens can go visit. Um, so it's a great way to, like I said, to not only get some use out of this new app, but use it in a, in a positive way, uh, throughout the holiday season. So we're really looking forward to that. So citizens are encouraged to submit their holiday light displays through that My Smyrna app. Um, it'll feature an interactive map for visitors and neighbors to explore. Smyrna's most festive displays, uh, when you download the app, it's one of the first things you'll see. Um, so it's, it's a very quick radio button there and we have a map that won't display all of the things that My Smyrna, uh, app offers. It'll just, just be that holiday display map. And so hopefully we'll get some good use out of that this year and, uh, and spread some holiday cheer.
Go by one of our many coffee shops, get you some hot chocolate or some coffee and check out people's Christmas lights.
Yep.
There you go.
Um, we, we are, we've just started, uh, our, updating our parks master plan. Our Parks and Recreation, uh, Department is, uh, moving forward with that. This will serve as our roadmap over the course of the next five years on what we are planning and decisions that we'll make in terms of recreational opportunities, athletic programs and future facility improvements throughout our community. And so we invite the public to share your thoughts and ideas to help us better understand Smyrna recreation needs and priorities as you see them. And your input will play a vital role in shaping the future of our Parks and Recreation system. Uh, so please take a few minutes to complete our community survey and make your voices heard. Um, there is a, uh, there is a QR code that is on our website. You can take the survey, um, from the, I think, believe it's on the Parks and Recreation website?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Great, perfect.
And plus I'm on the homepage for Council.
And it's on our homepage right now, too. So, so please, uh, participate in that. Share your thoughts with us. Um, your input really matters and helps shape our community. Want to, uh, remind folks that as the leaves, uh, have started to fall and with the weather we just had over the weekend, they're falling faster than ever. Um, but please remember to place those leaves in biodegradable lawn leaf, lawn leaf bags and place them on the street corner for pickup. Our wonderful Public Works and Streets crews will go around and pick those up in the regular I also want to recognize the great work of our, what's called our TOS Engage Committee as they continue to find ways to engage our employees. So this morning, in observance of Veterans Day, uh, we held a red, white and brew. And brew is not brewery, but brew coffee, uh, during working hours. And so we, uh, all got together here at, at Town Hall, shared some, some refreshments and, and some, some light, uh, food, uh, to just celebrate the veterans that are, uh, also our town employees. So want to recognize not only all of our veterans, but those that, here at, at the town, uh, that, that served. And so that was a great event that we got to do here this morning. That's all I have.
Great. Jeff?
Uh, nothing for me.
Jerome?
Yes, Mayor, I have a slide. Smyrna Fire Department's 24th Annual Firefighters for Food Drive. Join us Saturday, November 15th from nine, nine AM to four PM at Walmart, 570 Enon Springs Road East, as we collect non-perishable food items to support our neighbors in need through the Nourish Food Bank. Donation ideas, canned meats, dry pasta, canned vegetables, peanut butter, my favorite, baby food, rice, toothpaste, wipes and more.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Raquel?
All righty. So last week I had the pleasure of being interviewed by a Smyrna High School student named Jaden Apaya Kubey, who is studying criminal justice and he is preparing a research project, excuse me, a research paper, and he wanted to talk about government and certain issues related to some of the new laws that, um, have taken place. And so he came to my office and interviewed me and I wanted to just give him a shout out for, um, taking time to do that and wanting to learn more about government and how we all fit into the big plan. So, um, he was gracious enough to take a picture with me before he left and I wanted to thank him. I hope his research paper turned out well. And that's all I have.
Hey, HG?
I have two slides tonight and they kind of dovetail into each other. Um, some of you may have already heard about it, but TDOT has, uh, announced its fifth annual No Trash November. Um, nobody trashes Tennessee. It's a month-long statewide initiative encouraging Tennesseans to keep their communities clean. No Trash November aims to remove fifty thousand pounds of trash from the roadway. You know, ours is No Trash Smyrna year, every year. Uh, love where you live and help keep Smyrna litter-free. Um, want to also wish a one-day belated birthday to my mother. Uh, it's, uh, either her fault I'm here or, uh, you can thank her for me, whichever you prefer. Um, shop local and be kind. That's all I have, ma'am.
Jerry?
Um, I've got a slide as well. Here in a little less than two weeks, uh, want you to join us, uh, for the Smyrna Annual Christmas Tree Lighting. Uh, that's a Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, uh, to kick off the holiday seasons with us on Tuesday, the 25th at the Smyrna Train Depot. Uh, kids can enjoy, sing along with the SOAC staff and get their pictures made with Santa and Mrs. Claus, thanks to the Smyrna Fire and Police Department. Uh, this is one of my favorite things that, uh, that we do, so, uh, it, uh, I don't know if there'll be snow there this time or not, but I, I understand it probably will be, so it, uh, please, uh, if you bring your, bring your kids out, they will thoroughly enjoy it and you will too. So, hope you can come. That's all I've got.
Steve?
Um, I've got a slide as well. Um, Veterans Day ceremony was held this past Tuesday, 11th day of the 11th month at the 11th hour, uh, to celebrate, uh, what initially was Armistice Day. Uh, we had a great speaker, um, Staff Sergeant Robert Keith McElroy, um, came out and spoke to us about his time as an Army Band Member. Uh, twenty-five years, I think he said, twenty-something years. Um, he also played for us, played taps, which was very, very good and enjoyed, uh, the Stewart's Creek, um, I don't remember what they were called, the Apollo Contra Ensemble. Uh, they sang America's Beautiful and, um, Star Spangled Banner and did a great job with that. So it was a good, good event. Uh, it was a little brisk, but the sun was warm, so had a great time. And, um, thank you to the staff, Parks, Fire, Police Department for everything y'all did to make the event happen. It was awesome. So appreciate that. Um, congratulations to Vanessa Haley getting on planning and, uh, Angela Fredericks for, that might be condolences, Library Board. Uh, but I also do have some condolences. Uh, we lost, uh, a classmate this, in the last couple of weeks, Amy Tucker, who technically graduated in eighty-eight, I think. Um, but, uh, the Tucker family, um, her dad, David Tucker, had a barber shop for years out off Rocky Fork Road and, uh.
I thought it was over here.
It was, but I, I went to, I got a lot of haircuts from her dad, but, um, the Tucker family, let's keep them in our prayers and, uh, she, they have a, uh, service for her, Giles Creek Baptist Church on November 22nd, uh, 10 till 11. So, uh, condolences to the Tucker family. That's it.
Mark?
I have a couple of slides that'll pop up here. Uh, the first one is about TDOT, response to the public's continued interest in the proposed I-24 Southeast Choice Lanes Project. TDOT is reopening the public comment period for the fall of 2025, public meeting events from November 5th through November 19th, 2025. Please visit the virtual public meeting on the project website and submit your comments on any aspect of the proposed project. Visit tdot.com to get involved. This is a great way to sound off about your feelings about I-24 and its traffic and so forth, so.
Today, they were having conversations about how they would charge for the use of that and they're talking about, um, doing some sort of, uh, usage-based charge. When usage was higher, it'll be more and when it's less, it'll be less. So, uh, if you want an opinion or you have an opinion and want your say, make sure you hit this feedback site because now is when they're making those decisions.
And the next slide is about our food drive, Christmas Parade Food Drive. This season, let's share the spirit of giving. We're collecting non-perishable food items to support our friends and neighbors through the Nourish Food Bank. And how you can donate, draw off items here at Smyrna Town Hall, Monday through Friday, eight to four PM through December 5th. Donations will be accepted along with the parade route as well. Every can, box and bag of food makes a difference. Uh, I know there's a little competition going on inside City Hall right now and Mayor called us all out, so, uh, she better be getting some canned goods ready, so.
As of tonight, I think Mark is leading, but, uh, that won't end tomorrow.
Bill, uh, thank you Sean and Susan Collins for helping me get going, you know, and, uh, we appreciate that support.
For that initial lead. It's the last time he's going to be in the lead.
Unless you step up bigger. Um, I do want to say to, to the Veterans Day Celebration or Memorial that we had Tuesday, I always enjoy that. Jerry pointed out, uh, how he enjoys the Christmas event. I always enjoy the military events, being a military child. It just touches my heart, means a lot to me to see them honored. So thank you for everybody that put that together, all the crew that went out there and put it all together. It just, it's heartwarming to see. And, and Mr. McElroy did a wonderful job. Anybody that wants to hear about traveling in the military and serving different branches as a mun, as a musician, it's, it's a different way, isn't it? It's kind of different, but he was entertaining, to say the least. Vanessa, welcome to the planning commission. We will do all we can to help support you and learn as we go along. And maybe you can teach us a few new tricks as well. I do want to give a shout out to County Mayor Joe, Joe Carr. He had a pretty severe accident, took place on his farm this week. And we want to wish him happy healing as he recovers. And last but not least, Thanksgiving will be here before, I think we meet again. So to you and your families, be blessed. We're all very blessed to live where we live and have what we have. So be thankful, be grateful to God for everything you have in your household. A lot of people don't have that. Happy Thanksgiving.
We will meet again, so you can, you can thank them again. Yeah, you'll do, you'll do it again. HG, you were talking about love where you live and picking up trash. And Tony Proctor was actually at our Veterans Day service and he's been a little bit down and out and had a little bit of a, was in the hos, was at the hospital for a while. So, and he was asking, are y'all doing the November, the No Trash November? And I said, we're, we're doing it, we're doing it. So we hope Tony gets to feeling better and is, and is out in Seven Oaks picking up his trash for his neighborhood quickly. I have a couple of slides. We want to say thank you to the Secretary of State, Trey Hargit, for coming to Smyrna. And thank you to Mike Sparks for inviting him. He got to tour quite a few places while he was here and it was nice to hear his perspective. So we appreciate him coming and visiting some of our gems here in Smyrna. Last week, it was our GNRC in-person Mayor's Caucus Luncheon. We were actually at the governor's residence and it is a great time for the mayors of Middle Tennessee to get together. We got to hear from the deputy governor. We got to hear from Cameron Sexton, some of our state legislators. And it was, it was a, a good afternoon. So I appreciate all of the mayors that were there. Yesterday, several members of council and town staff attended the Power of Ten Conference put on by the Cumberland Region tomorrow. It's an annual event that brings a little more than 300 leaders and stakeholders from across the region to discuss issues and opportunities impacting our communities. Saw Kevin Lee and, from Middle Tennessee Electric was there. We saw some Thomas and Hutton people were there. I was trying to think of some others that we saw that were from our area. But it was, it was a, a full day and we had to be in, at the Music City Center at 8 o'clock yesterday morning. So I don't know how people that travel to Nashville every day early are, do it. It's, it was very frustrating and Steve's driving is not the best, but we won't get into that.
Oh, no, we won't.
She got there now.
Yeah, oof, yeah.
I'll ride with you any day.
Careful, careful. HG, what is it you always say?
Be kind.
Be kind. We want to invite you all out to Smyrna's 50th Annual Christmas Parade, which will take place Sunday, December 7th at 2 p.m. It is right around the corner. Our theme this year is a vintage Christmas. It starts at 2 p.m. It will be down Lowry Street. Remember those that are, are participating in the parade. Please don't forget your canned goods. Those that are coming to watch, please don't forget. Guys, this year, more than ever, our citizens around us are in need of food. We've heard from Nourish Food Bank that they really, really can use that. And if you don't choose to do canned goods, you always can do a monetary donation to Nourish Food Bank. So, but we hope you will come out and enjoy 50 years of tradition in Smyrna. I'd also like to thank the Child Advocacy Center for having me out Saturday morning for their golf tournament. Scott, do you remember by chance how many they had? How many, 144? 144 players, so quite a few. And it was a little foggy to start off, but it turned out to be a beautiful afternoon. So thank, thank you to the Child Advocacy Center for choosing the Smyrna golf course to hold their event and for everything they do. Also would like to thank TriStar Stonecrest Hospital for having me out to speak to the employees that are veterans on Veterans Day. That morning, I got to go out and speak to them and I really enjoyed having that opportunity. So, you know, I told them that all they did was change their uniform. They're still providing a service and a service to our community that is invaluable. And I think so many of us feel like it is a true community hospital with what they provide. So thank you to them for inviting me out.
Mayor, Stewart Creek High School did a wonderful job the other day, too.
Those young men did.
Yes, they did, so.
You know, both Stewart's Creek and Smyrna, and we usually swap up, but it just adds so much to our event.
At the memorial, they came to the memorial.
They did come for the, for the Veterans Day ceremony, so.
It was awesome to see 30 young men in their men's choir.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not something that happens very often where you can get young men to come out and actually sing and, and be a part of something like that. So it was really awesome to see them.
Last year, they had invited me to the Opryland Hotel where they had competed. And they were, they did a great job there as well. I think they represent us well. So we are, I don't know how much you know about Stewart's Creek High School and the arts department that they have, but I would say it's the best in the state, so they do an amazing job. So, okay, if there's nothing else, then, oh, yeah.
One more thing, just forgot to mention Chief Gos. Him and Assistant Chief Phelps were at Rotary today and kind of gave a great history of the Smyrna Fire Department.
Great.
Appreciate, appreciate.
Great. Sure, you're good.
Congratulations to a very close friend of mine, Jerry Green, who got married this past Friday. And Jerry and I grew up together and we went down to the, to the wedding in Jackson. So just congratulations to Jerry.
I saw some pictures of that. It looked like y'all had a nice time.
It was.
Good. If there is nothing else, then we are adjourned.